We have a quorum, so I want to welcome everybody to the joint meeting for the Rules and Open Government Committee and Committee of the Whole. And Tony, can you call roll, please?
Aranis? Cohen?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Peralas? Jones?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to start out with the agenda for April nineteenth. And we're going to start out on pages four and five. Six and seven. Eight. And nine. Ten. And eleven. Twelve. And thirteen. And fourteen. And there is an ad sheet, so when the bigger the motion makes the motion, please include the ad sheet and we are going to go to public speakers.
First hand up is Blair Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Happy Wednesday, mid-April, two thousand twenty-two. I, the two items that interest me on this consent calendar today are the digital equity issue that you'll be working on. They're an important concept. As always, I try to make clear the importance of, it's not just bridging the digital divide that is a part of our future. It's it's the open public policies and accountability in placing the technology and learning about the future of this Wi-Fi technology. It's a it's a hand-in-hand relationship of open public policy as how to better bridge the digital divide. Good luck in these important lessons. There's also an issue of downtown, the Dyradon Station, the future of the Dyradon Station planning issues. You guys are making some interesting beginning good efforts to be more open and accountable to kind of the entire Bay Area. What your plans are for the future of high-speed rail and possibly the future of this downtown train project. It's really important that, you know, as we're trying to build our own project here in San Jose, that we learn how to be just open and accountable to the Bay Area for the future of transportation and what will be the future of high-speed rail in the Bay Area. It's not just our little project anymore. It's a Bay Area issue that we need to be really open about, you know, explaining what's possible, the possibilities, the choices we have. I think there's choices that the future of transportation in the Bay Area can be open to all parts of the Bay Area and we need to hopefully can address that and it could be clear. And there was concerns given that the VTA at the VTA meeting that you have to be a bit more clear about the future of the high-speed rail projects and its funding. Good luck in all these efforts to be more open and accountable.
Martin?
Good evening, good afternoon. Is this just general public comment right now?
No, this is for the comment on the agenda for the nineteenth.
Okay, so but it's it's general comments about the agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. So
or specifically, I should say, specific comments about the agenda.
Specific comments, yes. So my my request for what I didn't see for the specific comments or for the specific agenda that's coming up is opportunities to share about transparency and meetings about upcoming areas of discussion around the gun harm reduction ordinances and related related elements of that that are coming up. I know we've already addressed two of the, a dozen or so that the mayor and council unanimously directed toward the city attorney to start drafting stuff. But since that time, I don't believe any meetings have actually occurred and any publicly publicly accessible meetings. There aren't any outreach meetings, there aren't any informative meetings led by this council or the mayor. And I was hoping that this upcoming
Yeah, Kurt, yeah, sorry for interrupting. It's probably your comments are probably best for the open forum.
Okay, so that's that's what I was asking.
Yeah, so that's why that's why I meant specific to
I apologize.
the agenda. So you know, I'll take I'll take I own that. I should have communicated better.
Okay, I'll wait till that point. I apologize.
No worries, Kurt. Take care. All right, that's it for public comments. Bringing it back to the committee, can I get a motion in a second?
Approval with the ad sheet.
Thank you.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Aranis? Cohen?
Hi.
Davis?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi.
Thank you.
On to the agenda for April twenty-sixth. Start out with pages four and five. Six. And seven. Eight. And nine. Ten. And eleven. And that is it. So we're going to go to public comments.
Blair Beekman?
Hi, Blair Beekman again. Sorry to ramble on a bit at the end. I could have finished my my public comment a bit sooner on the last item. Sorry about that. And to comment quickly on the ideas of clarity, I mean, Councilperson Jones tried to explain in the previous item. It is really hard to be clear. Sometimes you think you're being clear and sometimes, you know, the item, the previous item was talking about council agenda items pertaining to that particular agenda. Maybe if if Councilperson Jones offered those sort of words, that could have helped. It's so hard to get this right. I wanted to apologize. Yesterday I said the word about the, it was an item I spoke about term limits as being two eight-year terms when I should have said two four-year terms. And I'm sorry I missed that. Hopefully that can help clarify because if I don't, I look like a nut job, a nutcase, otherwise, unfortunately. But hopefully I'm working my way.
Let me let me work on trying to be more articulate and provide more clarity. Can you speak specifically to the
I was just getting there. Thank you for my ramblings on and just pontifications for today. About this agenda item, I just wanted to quickly offer a few thoughts on you're going to have some sort of emergency housing plan. And and I just wanted to remind in the importance of a home key programs that it is is how we learn to better talk about the future subsidy funding of the unhoused themselves to find housing. That's an important subject. I hope we can learn just more openly discuss with each other. And we already know how to do these things and do them well. It's just a matter of applying the subsidy funding available now and learning how to do that and make it a open and comfortable subject for ourselves. Good luck on those efforts and thank you.
Up to the chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. I'm noticing I noticed item eight point one is the homeless housing assistance and prevention program funding a spending plan. And I've I've made this request before and it hasn't happened. And I'm just curious. When are we going to get a comprehensive view of how much we're spending on homelessness? I I think it's, I assume that we're we're looking at this plan in advance of the budget. I, these things always come outside of the budget process. And I just don't understand we not, why we never get a comprehensive view of exactly how much we're spending on homeless housing prevention and services. And we've, we got a report, I think it was last week or two weeks ago. And then we talked about, we're going to talk about Measure E, but that's separate. That'll be next week. And then this comes on the on the nineteenth. And so I'm just, or the twenty-sixth, and I'm just, it's a little crazy making not to know what the full picture is.
Councilmember, I can definitely follow up with you. And we we have taken these actions independently versus various funding sources because we need to identify and recognize, obviously, the funds as they become available. But I I do know there is an effort to combine all of that and show that picture. So let me see where that is and follow up with you.
It's really hard to approve these piecemeal like this. And I understand why we have to do that. But if we're not getting the full picture of what we're already spending, um, when we approve, you know, the next tranche of money that comes in, it's really hard to give any meaningful feedback. So
I understand. I think it's a picture we can help paint as part of the budget process so that you have that as part of your decision making.
Great. Thank you so much. With that, I will move approval of the agenda for the twenty-sixth.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
One second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Owen?
Hi.
Davis?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the consent calendar. Do we have any public speakers for consent?
Yes, Blair Beekman?
Hi, Blair Beekman here again. Thank you. I wanted to speak on the public record and hopefully the monthly audit report. On the public record, there's a really nice letter that spells out, you know, things we need to work on for the future of policing in San Jose. I mentioned it a few times now in public meetings. Hopefully I can say it better today. With the study session process we had a couple of days ago, that was really interesting, that brought kind of our better ideals out, how we're going to work in the future of the city. I hope we can spend the next few months being able to talk about those issues more 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 readily and often. We're having a commission process, the Reimagined Task Force Commission, along with a whole bunch of other study subject matter that I think can make the questions about the Law Victoria issue, the police issue, shooting issue a few weeks ago a lot more easier to understand and and work with from all parts of the community and really come to a middle ground and meeting point, I think, to really address the concerns of what happened at Law Victoria. I just wanted to say again, you know, good luck how we can all come together and work on this issue. And I wanted to mention also about the future of the audit reporting, there's clean energy issues involved, as always, a number of issues that are just nice to look at each month at this time. And I just wanted to again remind, you know, that with the clean energy issues, I've given my my prognostications of possible natural disasters in the next few years. I learned this from community energy reporting. They may have been statistically gathering data, preparing for what Putin is going through right now and what we're going to be going through as a country and more US fossil fuel use the next year. Good luck how we can address that and really stick to our morals and principles about renewable energy. Thank you.
Up to the chair.
All right. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
Move to accept the consent calendar.
I can.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Cohen?
Hi.
Davis?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is addressing rising crime and expanding treatment for arrestees in San Jose. And we've, let's go to the public first. For public comments.
Blair Beekman?
Hi, Blair Beekman here. I think I I hope that we've all noticed that since this past November, all major barrier cities were like really, they got something came in and just said, we're going to be addressing crime now. It's it's more than likely that federal federal agencies came in and said, you know, Oakland, to San Francisco, to San Jose, it's time we start addressing a crime issue. And I think that heavy hand, that heavy concept really went around. And I think it, I think it's made quite an impression. And I think we're, I think you can already feel that crime is being reduced in certain ways. And I hope we don't have to belabor these sort of points. And you know what I try to belabor? That I think openness and accountability practices and with technology and data collection, it can help really, really organize our law enforcement questions at this time. The use of civil protection ideas is a great set of guidelines, how to consider the future of law enforcement questions and to help address, you know, these matters that you're trying to today of what to do with with people who are victims of crime, what to do about racial equity issues. We can now bring in the ideas of racial equity, health and human services, and all the other good stuff, you know, to really address ourselves. You know, we don't have to be pinned because we have to address new law enforcement concerns. And I don't think it's a matter of putting in a ton of new technology as we already have a ton of new technology in place. And it's a matter of really working out our better principles. And I hope you can talk about those here today and for the future of this sort of item. Thank you.
Eric Martin?
Yes, hi. Thanks for bringing up a topic like this. I think it's it's really important that you guys are talking about this. I hope this does make it on to your agendas coming up. I do think that there should be a instilled practice for sharing the issues transparently and objectively with the public, not just in a forum like this or just with law enforcement. I saw in some of the recommendations in the memo that that would be available for, you know, gathering information and then sharing it for the public in general. And I hope that you actually do that. There are a number of things that the Department of Justice recommends that I don't believe San Jose is doing. And those policies and practices are proven evidence-based practices that would help with crime, addressing crime in our city. And I hope that you will look at those and embrace those. But more importantly, I hope that you will take an effort like this and share and embrace public engagement in this process, build that into the process so that members of the public that want to attend and want to participate in this process can have their voices heard and then actually hear what's being done and what's being suggested so they can help share that with others in their community so that they can participate more effectively. There are many free programs that already exist that unfortunately San Jose is not doing. And I'm happy to share those offline for anybody that wants that. Thanks very much.
Up to the chair.
Great. So Lee, we have an early consideration forum on this, so go ahead and provide your input.
Thank you, Vice Vice Mayor. We did, we did a preliminary early consideration forum. And so we request via that form that the Rules Committee defer this item for one week to give the administration additional time to seek some clarity from the authors, but also, you know, organize ourselves, all the departments that need to respond to that. So this would come back next week to Rules Committee and we would do an updated early consideration forum.
Now, Lee, I mean, there's a whole lot to unpack in that memo. Do you think a week is realistic?
Um, yes, I think it's realistic. If it isn't, if it does require more time or more clarity, or we have questions from the county or DA's office, we could come back next week and ask for an additional deferral if needed.
I wish I could see the faces of your staff as you just said you can get back in a week. I'm still, you know, I hear what you're saying. I just just the amount of work and effort. I just don't see it in a week.
Yeah.
So I mean, if you're comfortable with, you know, requesting a week and then coming back and saying you need more time, that's fine. I just want to try to set expectations now.
You know, I appreciate that very much, Vice Mayor. If the Rules Committee is more comfortable with a two-week deferral, that would definitely give us more time to to do that work. So you know, whether it's a week or two weeks, we're fine either way.
Okay, thank you, Lee. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. I'm, I have similar questions, especially because it looked to me, Lee, like this should have been something that was part of the mayor's March budget message because there were budget implications for, if not all of these items, many of these items. So when you come back to us with your early consideration forum, will you be bringing the budget implications to us at that time?
So typically what we do, if there's something that is budget-related and it's an ad, one of two things happens. If it's if it's out of budget cycle, it's a yellow light if it is a budget ad. We have with other forms in the past while we are developing the budget, if there's something related to a policy recommendation that does require budget and it's it's part of our work that we're starting to, we can kind of greenlight it pending, you know, approval of the budget. And I would just say, and at least in the, you know, looking at the recommendations, unclear which ones are budget-related exactly yet. But I do know that there's portions of some of these recommendations that coincide with some of the actions that you took in the mayor's March message that he offered. But we need time to sync those up.
Right, right. And thank you. And and I just want to say, I do, for the public, I don't know if if everybody's taking the time to read these ten pages. There are certainly some very good points made in the memo. One of the points being that the city doesn't have jurisdiction over a lot of the things that are mentioned in the memo. And so it's it's asking for coordination and collaboration, which is something that I've been talking about for quite some time. And so I I'm especially concerned or wondering about those items, Lee. And and why? What the thoughts are about the the drug treatment services, how that would fit in and where that, what what department are you going to go to to ask about that? And that body of work? Because we don't have a services, a social services department.
Hey, sorry, sorry for interjecting. Lee, I know that this is going to be part of the two-week process, you know, for you to figure that all out. So what I would suggest to my colleagues is definitely provide that input and then give them an opportunity to 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 figure it out. But I don't know if you're going to get you know, clarity in this meeting.
That's a fair point, Vice Mayor, and and I appreciate it. And I would also, and I'm happy to make the make the motion for for staff to come back to us with a a more comprehensive early consideration form, including maybe some budget budget implications. And also, what what of this work could be handled by the mayor's gang prevention task force? Because that is the group that that does work across multiple agencies already. And I think they take a broader, I know they're called the mayor's gang prevention task force, but my understanding is that they take a broader look at at what can be done for crime prevention. So I guess I'm just, I'm really, I've been really confused about this memo and about why it came the way it did without without being part of the budget process or with the with the mayor just not acting through the mayor's gang prevention task force. So I really appreciate so my my motion is for staff, I'm going to give, I'm going to give you guys two weeks because I think this is a lot of material. And there's, like I said, there's new stuff in here that we don't even have departments for. So I'm not sure how you guys are going to work that out. So my motion is to defer for for two weeks so staff can come back with a better handle on on what this might look like and how to incorporate it.
Second.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, I just want to, I think Mike Collins pretty much said a lot of the things that I was going to ask about or asked about some of them. But just just in my, some of my thoughts too, or as you do, we, as you and your staff look into this, obviously, there'll be some outreach to the county departments, to attention to the DA's office, to other outside agencies about what what can work, what can't work, which of these things are already in process, maybe with some of the other jurisdictions? Which are things that we alone can and should address? And which things should go to mayors to some, I mean, manager budget memos, budget addendums to help us understand, you know, the cost implications. So kind of getting all that information to us before we discuss it in a couple of weeks would be helpful. So we know how to parse it and maybe recommend the proper portions of it to to move forward and and leave some behind that might not be within our purview or doable. Anyway, that's just my comment I want to make. And I'm I'm happy with the deferral so we can get some more answers from from you and staff.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And Lee, have your staff send me thank you notes or cupcakes, either one.
Yeah, I think the the donuts and the cupcakes are on their way.
All right. All right, so we have a motion in a second. Do we have a roll call, please?
Aranis?
Yes.
Cohen? Davis?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay. On to open forum.
The first speaker is Blair Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Hopefully my Zoom is not going to cut out on me at this time. Thanks for the meeting today. I guess, you know, to start off, I hope peace negotiations can be continuing in the Ukraine and Russian area. They've been going in a big circle. I mean, they're basically, they're negotiating the same things they would have been negotiating. They didn't go to war. Russia didn't go to war. I I wish it wasn't the case, but I think I hope we all can put constructive good energy towards peace negotiations and really work something out. I think if we all focus on those things, that would help end war and work towards peace. Thank you for that. And of course, you know, the stuff we do here locally, I think can be of much help and how they'll be defining your future. So good luck in those efforts. About, you know, I wanted to say hi to Paul Soto, who is still in, he's he's in a difficult place at this time where he didn't have to be necessarily. I think for all, we want to be tough on crime again. We want to possibly be ending certain homeless encampment laws coming up and say that we're now all more streamlined and efficient and good and cool. You've got to be careful when we do this. I'm worried that we're going to be expanding Lawrence lawn some way. I'm worried that, you know, even though we do need to address these things, we have to really watch ourselves and how we do this. Because Paul Soto, he may be getting help where he is right now, but he did not have to be there. It didn't have to come to this for him to be at that place to get help. And I'm a bit upset that we have to use those sort of systems. A lot of people are going to fall through the cracks with what you guys are about to do. Please be wary and mindful and you have to be really cautious how we move forward. Thank you.
A caller with the phone number ending in four nine six three?
Martha O'Connell with report number three on environmental services plan to electrify existing buildings in San Jose, including single-family and mobile homes. In March, I asked ES for a copy of the draft plan, silence. Thanks to Councilperson Davis, a copy of the hundred and fifty-six page plan was delivered to my home. I asked ES for copies of the presentation slides, silence. I posted in spotlight. It was only then that ES sent me the slide pages with a note that said, quote, please note that in your case, we have waived fees typically charged for printed copies and postage, unquote. To copy the usual buzzwords from city bureaucrats, this is hardly robust outreach to stakeholders using every tool in our toolbox to maximize community involvement, especially in marginalized communities. The draft plan is a hundred and fifty-six pages. The word equity appears sixty-three times. Marginalized communities groups appears a hundred and eight times. Low income appears five times. ES should provide copies of this report to any citizen that asks for it. Copies should be on the front counter of the ES office and mailed to those who can't take the light rail downtown due to COVID. It is outrageous and indeed hypocritical of ES to talk about equity, low income, and marginalized groups, and then want to charge for a hundred and fifty-six page report. Thanks to Councilperson Davis for getting the report to me so that I could analyze it before before the meeting with ES and Representative and representatives of the mobile home community, both resident and park management.
Eric Martin.
Yes, thank you, Committee. And I appreciate being redirected on when to share comments. So my comments are around transparency, similar to what the caller just spoke about in the spirit, not maybe the same topic, but the same issue, and that is engagement with the community, outreach, informing, keeping involved the very people that you're there to serve. And specifically, whether you support gun rights or you rather see more guns on or off out of people's homes or you, you're a fan or not of guns. The issue around the gun ordinances that were introduced back in July of last year, or June of last year, completely bypassed this committee ongoing. So anything that's going to be brought forth in those, in that discussion where the mayor and unanimous council, all the people in this meeting supported the research, but my understanding was there was also outreach and engagement and involvement from a diverse group of people that was supposed to happen. Community meetings were supposed to happen and research was supposed to happen and opinions and voices. And honestly, none of that has actually happened. The only thing that's happened is the mayor's office is the only organization or only portion of, of government that's been reaching out to anybody, and it's only to select people. And any future things that are coming back, for example, the ghost gun ordinance that's coming up in the next few weeks or couple of weeks, that's completely bypassed this committee because everything's been kind of fast-tracked from council directions. It doesn't have to go back to this committee to even be discussed. And now the organizations that are outreach-ing or are tasked with outreach-ing, like the city manager's office, the attorney's office specifically, I don't think they're doing that. Council offices aren't involved either. Thank you.
Up to the chair.
All right. That's it for public comments. So this meeting is adjourned. Take care, everyone.